Okay, welcome to tonight's study session, or not study session, pre-meeting session for July 10. And do councilors have any questions on the agenda to start with? Obie?
No questions.
Counselor Evans, Counselor Baker.
No.
Okay, I just had one random question. Just curious on the, what is it, Greens out, no, the townhome product, project.
Yes.
I'm just curious why we didn't apply the, the attached, single-family attached guidelines versus trying to make the multi-family ones work with waivers.
That's a deeper level of knowledge than I have, so let me see if we've got a staff member.
It might also.
Come on up, come on up, introduce yourself and answer the question, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nathan, Senior Planner. The simple answer is our multi-family design standards are applied to any projects over a certain density, a certain unit threshold. So this exceeded it, so we have to apply them, which is tricky to do, as you probably see.
So is that a density of eight units, the acre?
No, it's the total unit count, I'll have to look up what the exact number is, but it exceeded that as most of our projects do, that are, that are ten-house products. Yeah, I'll have to look it up.
That's all right, because I know it's just forty, it's clearly under forty, but, huh.
Yeah, so we have to do that for all of, pretty much all the projects. Over a certain threshold.
It's weird, they should probably fix that at some point.
We are working on it.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, that was just clearly not even worth an email, but.
Reminder, get your green sheets into Abby before you leave tonight. Any reports of what's going on in the past two weeks? Counselor Isadi? Counselor Seymour?
I mean, I was on, I was even on the wrong month, that's how interesting it was. No, I do want to say thanks to, especially the emergency personnel and Parks and Rec staff for the amazing lightning and wind show before the show. And so, but then more importantly, getting people evacuated and doing that on the drop of a hat. So it was well coordinated, no panic, and people got safe, and then the show went on, so, well done.
Counselor Evans? No, I just want to give a shout out to the Westminster Historical Society, though. The baseball game on Saturday was well attended, and it was great weather.
And we won!
We won.
And the women protested, and tell them about your little badge.
Oh, yes, I just have a little junior police officer badge on, thanks to our PD that attended, so, yeah, just for them.
Counselor Baker? Counselor, Mayor Protem?
I attended the Airport Roundtable on Thursday, and so I shared back with council the map that they provided back. That is basically the feedback from each person who, or each entity who put a map forward, including us. And I provided that to Mark for the team to look at and say whether or not there was anything they missed. The next meeting, they should hopefully come back with some feedback and some ideas of what they can do with those maps. As far as maybe some tactics in flight paths that might help the noise issues. The other thing that we talked about at the meeting was dues. So they, by IGA, they have to set dues at the July meeting. And so the, there were two recommendations, one was zero, one was what is agreed upon in the IGA. And since it was already agreed upon in our IGA, I felt, you know, that that would be okay for us to stick with. And so I shared if there, if the body wanted to change it, that I would have to come back and ask, even if that was zero, because I feel. But the group agreed to stay at the thirty, I think it's thirty-six hundred that the IGA says. So I anticipate that that's what we're gonna adopt and stick with, is that money, and that, you know, is the original one. So not the increase that we gave, which will continue to allow us to, you know, continue the work past, you know, the extra money we're spending this year on the consultants.
And you've met with the, the new consultants, been at the last few meetings?
They have, the, the, two things that are kind of new is one, the consultants have been at both the last two meetings. And we also have a regular attending FAA member who is assigned to our group, which I hear is not always the case. But we have the same one who shows up. He was not at, he was at this very last meeting, but he wasn't the one prior, just because he was on vacation. But we do have an assigned FAA member, which is nice, because then they can, you know, deal directly with the FAA and us as they go through the recommendations. To know whether or not recommendations would work for the FAA.
I think you said upstairs during dinner that they read what their.
They do, we, because I know that, and I know that we as a council have talked about trying to figure out what's going on with lead. And I know we have a study session in the future around the subject. But because the roundtable has, you know, not, A, they don't have authority over it, but B, that's not what the group was, it's not in the IGA. And so they did start reading, you know, part of their thing about what we're there for. And they've been trying to tone down what's been going on in the meeting, so we can get to work, quite frankly. And I will say that there was an addition of security at this meeting, which is something that we didn't have before. And I feel like, it was a smaller meeting this time, I don't know if that was because of the holiday, or, you know, if folks have another reason why they're not coming. But they are trying to, you know, keep people on task around what, you know, what we're there for. Obviously, just, you know, like any other public meeting, they can say whatever they want. But we're trying to make it at least relative to the things that we can do there as a group.
Counselor Nama?
So the Denver Regional Council of Government's work session was canceled for last week due to the holidays. The, I just wanted to give a shout out to Parks and Rec and all of the public safety employees that just put on a wonderful event despite the nothing that came over the whole. Sorry, if you haven't seen the never-ending story, now you're done. Well, I'm fine. As we get older, less people know. And so that was, that was kind of crazy, but I'm glad we got some fireworks still going. And, gosh, there was one other.
CMO?
CMO was the week before, right? Yeah, no, no, this is sad, I had something.
We didn't have a meeting since CMO.
We haven't, have we?
Okay, I, I might remember it.
Okay.
When you, so go ahead and talk.
Well, yes, the fireworks, that's my life, I love it. And so even though we had the good, bad, and the ugly, it was great. And my neighbors in the next block celebrated for a full three hours and gave me probably more than the city of Westminster had. So I guess they must have a lot of money or something, because we just sat in the front window and watched, watched, watched. And my normal World War III people, they must have gone someplace else. They were quiet. But Gabby didn't like any firework, she was under covers, shaking. Historical Society was terrific. We did win, we had over 200 people there, and our scouts that cooked for us did a great job, they almost sold out. Who else could have sold, or where could you have gotten a five-dollar full meal deal with brats or dogs, drink, and chips for five bucks? We were the best deal in town. So it was, it was a great weekend, so, thanks to everybody and Parks and Rec, and, yeah, our first responders, that probably, I don't know how many calls they got in, but probably way too many. Update on me, I've had my first oncology doctor's visit. My voice is crazy tonight, because the pill I'm on dries everything up. I think I mentioned last week, or last meeting, that the biopsy shared was that this cancer thrives on estrogen and hormones. And so my tongue feels like it's a dry, dry sponge, which isn't bad, because it reminds me to drink, and sometimes I'm bad at that. But other side effects, if you see me burning up, I probably am with a great hot flash, but you might see me cuddled up in my blanket because I'm cold. So you never know what I'm gonna be, but I know I've met people that are not sure how to approach me. I told you at the last time that I shared what was going on with me. I'm willing to talk about it. I joke with the doctors, I take each day at a time, always have since we had Shay in 2009 start this process. You're only guaranteed today, I don't know what's gonna happen when I leave here, so why worry about it, make it the best we can. So that's my principle, as things continue, I'll keep you abreast, don't be afraid to ask if you have other questions. But the worst thing I wanted was all the rumors of people hearing different things, I want you to hear from me. So it's okay to talk about it, it's okay to hug me, it's okay to pray for me, it's okay, whatever. So I've had a few people call, and they don't even know how to broach it, and so I do it for them. So I just thanks everybody for their support, and that's all we have, do you have anything?
I have one thing, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, so in your packets tonight is a parking pass and a map for Friday night's McFaul Park dedication. And so if you look at the map, if you park in the northwest corner of the park, that, that will be the place. And so there'll be reserved parking spots there for you, and encourage you to come on out and participate. Starts at six o'clock, six to six-thirty for the ceremony, six-thirty to seven-thirty or so for the reception. And it should be guaranteed a beautiful evening. We'll see whether that plays out.
Big words.
Parks and Rec must really have the connections.
I'll inform council now that I won't be able to attend this, it's my anniversary, so.
What?
I think my partner will be, my husband will be very upset if I don't celebrate it.
I'd buy the popcorn.
Okay, so. We'll see everybody at seven.
When I will be just able to do the beginning of. Oh, the park. Okay.
Yeah, it's out there.
Ready to go?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Question to city clerk, are we ready to? Welcome to tonight's meeting of July 10th, 2023. Tonight, we first start with Economic Development Authority meeting, but first, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for July 10th, 2023. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. We want to be sure that all feel welcome and remind all there are expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in the council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked.
That brings us to consideration of minutes of April 24th, 2023. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 26th, 2023 meeting as presented.
Counselor.
Mayor?
Yes, I know. Counselors. Yes, we're doing.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, but just go ahead.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second.
The date for the minutes was wrong. He read the date for the council minutes.
Yeah, I would amend that to the WEDA meeting for April 24th, 2023.
That's what is on my paper. Did I not read that?
I read the wrong one.
Oh, oh, right. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Board Member Baker. Vice Chair Demott.
Present.
Board Member Evans.
Present.
Board Member Azadi.
Here.
Chairperson McNally.
Present.
Board Member Normella.
Here.
And Board Member Seymour.
Here.
Tonight, we have a public hearing and a resolution. And do we have staff that wants to present anything? City manager?
No.
Okay. Then I would open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to talk about this issue, come forward. Or did anybody sign up?
No one signed up to speak on this item.
If you didn't know you were supposed to sign up and want to speak, stand up and come on down. See, no one. I closed the public hearing and there is a resolution number 222, 227. Board Member Seymour?
Thank you, Chair. Move to adopt a resolution number 227, amending the appropriations for the 2023 Westminster Economic Development Authority WEDA budget reallocating $1,273,686 from the WEDA Reserve Capital Improvement Project account to the Westminster Economic Development Authority. General Capital Improvement Fund transfer account to the city's GCIF. Transfers WEDA account, the amendment of the budget will allow WEDA to transfer funds to the city. Subject to council approval, the city will then appropriate these funds to the GCIF Westminster Urban Renewal Plan roadway alley account to fund the construction contract with Hall Irwin, Inc., and other construction-related services such as restoration materials, testing, and construction management services.
Counselor Evans, Board Member Evans.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 227. Is there any further discussion, Counselor? Board Member Baker?
Yes, I'd like to know the reason for us building this roadway.
Mr. Burke, could you come forward, please?
Certainly, John Burke, Economic Vibrancy Manager. Board Member Baker, he is happy to answer that question. As part of our agreement with Marzac Fine Foods and with many other developments in downtown Westminster, we are required to build those public infrastructures such as all the roads, water, sewer that's out there currently.
When we approved the sale of the million-dollar property to 477 Fine Holdings doing business as Marzac Food for half the valued price, I was under the impression that they could build, they could remodel the U.S. Bank Building there without any additional work on our part.
So that would be mostly correct, but also in that same motion that night that was identified in that memo that we would be responsible for the public infrastructure that serves not only Marzac, because yes, that was a half-million-dollar purchase and also probably a three- to four-million-dollar investment to adaptively reuse that old bank into now a grocery store. And so there is private investment going into that deal as well. And then this road actually serves not only Marzac, but the future condominium site and the vacant lot that is to the southeast there as well.
We do have a tentative agreement for the northwest corner of this, say, one block, but that's still probably two to three years away from being built.
Yes, I would say it's probably about a year and a half to two years before we start construction on the next one with the developer.
And do we have any interest on the southeast corner of it?
Not at this time, no. We've not actually marketed that side to the general public or the developers at this time.
Okay, but we have had the Davis Partnership look at it and evaluate it, haven't we?
100%, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Board Member Baker.
No.
Vice Chair Demott.
Yes.
Board Member Evans.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Chair McNally.
Yes.
Board Member Normella.
Yes.
And Board Member Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Mr. Frankel, do we have to have a motion to close this meeting? May I close it since there's no other?
Since that concludes the WEDA agenda, I think you can just close it.
Okay. That concludes the WEDA agenda for July 10th, and we will close that meeting and move into our city council meeting, incorporating the roll call from the WEDA meeting. And that brings us to consideration of minutes of preceding meeting from June 26th, 2023. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 26th, 2023 meeting as presented.
Counselor Evans?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of June 26th, 2023. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations. Mayor Protem is going to do it since my voice is crackly tonight and you don't want to listen to me.
Thank you. Could I get whoever is here to accept the proclamation for pretrial probation and parole supervision week? Join me up front.
Welcome.
Go ahead and let you guys introduce yourselves, starting with the judge.
Jason Montine, presiding judge.
Jessie Vialpondo, probation officer with the City of Westminster Municipal Court.
Irma Gonzalez, the probation clerk.
Tracy Katchaw, probation officer.
Thank you very much for being here and for the work that you do. I know reading through the notes, they give a lot of detail around the work that these folks do. If I recall correctly, it's about 435 cases last year that you did, give or take. So justice is a very important function of government, and so that starts from pretrial to, you know, victims to people who are actually under trial and making sure that we deliver good justice has a lot of different pieces to it. So these folks obviously do very important work for the city and the folks that go through their offices, and so recognizing them is important. I would encourage you to go read the details around it. They do give some statistics around the work that you folks do. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas community corrections professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders and work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas the community corrections professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas community corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas the theme for the 2023 pretrial probation and parole supervision week is stronger together, now therefore I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of July 26th through 2020, or the 22nd as pretrial probation and parole supervision week. That's a bit of a tongue twister. Call upon the people of Westminster to recognize and support the activities and efforts of our local community corrections professionals signed this 10th day of July, 2023. Nancy McNally, Mayor of Westminster. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for an item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments until that public hearing is called. Tonight, there are two public hearings on the agenda. One regarding the fourth amended PDP and the fifth amended ODP of the Green Lawn subdivision, and the second public hearing is one to authorize to execute a contract with Hall Irwin and provide a supplemental appropriation for construction contract.
I will ask city clerk, how many emails, voicemails, and who do we have signed up for tonight?
We have two emails that were emailed to council and attached to the packet. We have zero voicemails this evening, and we have two people signed up. The first person to sign up to speak is Karen Calaviti.
Welcome.
Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. I want to bring up on Saturday, I did not attend the historic baseball game, but I did visit with Nancy, or Linda, her name is Linda, of the Historic Society here in Westminster. And I was on a tour of the, some of the farms that Westminster owns, and it was really nice to see some of the open space up north. And there's a lot of nice things about Westminster. But I'm sorry to say, when I get a postcard like this in the mail addressed to me, my first thought is, what is the BS? What is the propaganda that I have to decode on this? This is about the water treatment plant. And, you know, it's got graphics of an eagle, it's got the mountains, it's got a picture of Mark Freitag. And, you know, it talks about the water treatment plant, how great it is, and how, you know, it's not going to cost very much, they're saving $100 million. And I mean, you know, $100 million, that's what it should cost, not what it should save. And then it goes on to talk about not more than 4.9% annual increases for 10 years. And it's like, well, what happens after 10 years? Is that a balloon payment or does the increase stop? But it also talks about the situation only being about a financial one, that the only concern that people had with the water treatment plant was financial. And that was a big concern, and I still don't think it has been adequately addressed. But there's also another concern, there's an environmental concern. This is not a state-of-the-art water treatment plant that's being proposed. This is invoking eminent domain on a large, nice site that you're not supposed to use eminent domain unless there's no other alternatives. And there was never any alternatives looked at except for the ones that the consultant, you know, deduced that would, you know, not meet the needs of their plan. I mean, there's other consultants, there's other ways of doing this thing. And then again, with the picture of the bald eagle on this, we know now that there's a nesting pair of bald eagles in that area. And the response I got was, well, we'll wait till migration time to do the work. well, we'll wait till migration time to do the work. And it's like, that's nuts. I mean, migrating, eagles do migrate, but nesting pairs usually do not migrate. So we're really supposed to be taking into account that the special nature of that site. And it, it holds a nesting pair of, of bald eagles. It is a nice space. There's, there's prairie dogs, there's lots of wildlife over in that area. And the fact that we've just kind of gone ahead with a very expensive and very environmentally insensitive water treatment plant really makes me angry, especially when it was a big subject for people. They, they wanted a recall on the, on the first batch of people who were proposing this. And it was, a lot of people thought that the next group of people in this city council were not going to approve that similar kind of water treatment plant. And it, it is not a well-thought-out situation and a very expensive situation that's going to encumber people for generations to come. And I, I still have a hard time believing that the best interest of Westminster was thought about when we did this kind of thing.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to pray for the City of Westminster. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Christ's precious and holy name, we invite you here to the City of Westminster. In Psalm 33:9, it states, "For he spoke, and he came to be; he commanded, and it stood firm. You created it all. You've provided, provided a place for us, and you are always welcome here." I lift up all people to you. We need your spirit to come and be among us. We are living in a spiritual war, and we have no chance without you. Our enemy is all around us. In 1 Peter 5:8, it states, "Be sober-minded, be watchful. Your adversary, the devil, prowls around like a roaring lion, seeking someone to devour. He's devouring your creation because truth is being hidden from us. Many times, we don't even have a clue of what we are being deceived about. We go about our days, and everything is normal. We've become accustomed to the muck and the mire when you have so much more to offer us." Isaiah 6:9 describes us, it states, "And he said, 'Go and say this to the people: Keep on hearing, but do not understand; keep on seeing, but do not perceive.'" Our hope lies with the Holy Spirit. In John 14:26, it states, "But the Helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send in my name, he will teach you all things, and bring to your remembrance all that I have said to you." Send your Holy Spirit to all people, open our eyes and our ears, and give us understanding. Let us be aware of the deception around us. There are individuals the devil is using to move an evil agenda forward. The deception is so great that it has consumed our lives. We want peace. One last time, send your Holy Spirit to those who are attempting to destroy us, to see if they will turn from their ways. If not, send us leaders who want good for mankind. In Psalm 75:7, it states, "But it is God who executes judgment, putting down one and lifting up another." We can rest in the comfort that your truth is on the horizon and your judgment is following. In Jesus Christ precious and holy name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys, and have a nice night.
Thank you.
That's the last person I had signed up.
Thanks. In case anybody was here late, we have from 6:30 to 7:00 a sign up. If you didn't get signed up and would like to speak, let me know. Thank you. City manager report?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, and ladies and gentlemen, those watching online. We'll go to the next slide. So a couple of things to update everybody on. First of all, just got a special event coming up on Friday evening this week. So Westminster Center Park, which has been also referred to as Peter Pan Park, will be renamed McFaul Park in honor of former city manager Brent McFaul. And city manager McFaul was inspired by residents who asked for more park space, and so city manager McFaul helped the city secure grant money to clean up the area, to help it become the thriving park that it is today. If you want to read more about city manager McFaul's legacy, there's a link there which you can follow to do that, but would encourage the community to come out and attend the park dedication. It will be right across the street, I guess that way. And Friday night, 6:00 PM, right at the pavilion. And, you know, look forward to honoring the work that city manager McFaul did on behalf of Westminster. So, great event for our community. The other thing that I'd like to highlight is Bike to Work Day was a week before last. We, the City of Westminster, had a station there. We had 200-plus cyclists that stopped off at the city's station. We were on the west side of New Shored and Underpass, and, you know, an opportunity to engage the community, pass out some, some schwag, and just have a good time engaging the community. But that's for folks that are riding that trail north and south. So, great event there. Next slide. Some westy wins, and so great news for Jeffco Public Schools specifically, but their financial oversight committee, they've selected our policy and budget manager, John Presner, to serve on their financial oversight committee. And, you know, this is a community volunteer opportunity for John, and a big win for our organization with Jeffco Public Schools. And so we want to congratulate John on this achievement. And he's a super, super smart guy and extremely sharp when it comes to all things budgets and finance. So he's the right person for this job. Next, some residents had a great time, as mentioned earlier, this evening in the, the pre-meeting, but 4th of July celebration. About 4,000 residents showed up to celebrate Independence Day. You know, kudos, hats off to Parks, Rec, and Library, and then our first responders, police and fire, and all the public works folks who helped to secure the site, set it up, and then make sure that everybody was well taken care of. We did, I guess, about 7:15, the, the thunderstorms and the lightning rolled in, and so we had to evacuate the place. They handled it professionally. We appreciate the community responding and listening and doing what they were supposed to be doing. We had about a two-hour pause and then executed fireworks that evening. And so a great, a great event to celebrate our nation's independence. Next slide. Some things to know, inclusivity board meeting Wednesday this week, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, in the CMO conference room here at City Hall. Top Taco, tickets are required Thursday, July 13, 6:00 to 10:00 PM. That's at City Park. If you want to get tickets or learn more, please contact Leah Crumpholz, and that's her email address indicated on the slide. As I mentioned, Friday night, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, dedication ceremony for McFaul Park. Also, in combination with that, so it's really a twofer, you've got the McFaul Park dedication, and then neighborhood nights and movie in the park will be co-located on-site. And so from 6:30 to 9:30 PM, right there at McFaul Park. And then our next meeting here in the city is the City Hall, or correction, City Council Study Session next Monday, 6:30 PM, right here in council chambers. Next slide. Information-only items tonight. We had a strategic plan update, kind of a mid, mid-year update on kind of where we're at on this year's strategic plan tasks. Next slide. And as always, encourage folks to reach out and talk to us, ask questions, raise your issues, raise your concerns, provide us your feedback, good ideas. Please contact the city manager's office. You can do that at 658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Nextdoor. As always, we want to remain accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Got any questions? That's all I have this evening.
I just wanted to make a comment. The night of the fireworks, whoever was handling communications, all you had to do was look at your Facebook, if you're a Twitter person, they were, it was constant. Alls we had to do is go out our back door to watch. So they, they told us when it was going to happen. We barely got out there in the first boom and took off. So whoever was doing all of that really kept the public knowing when those were going to be, because the rumor mill was, this is canceled, that's canceled, Broomfield was canceled, and, and neither of us were. So it was great communication to hear directly from us so that we knew what was going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll pass that along.
Anyone else? Thanks. That brings us to city council comments. Councilor Baker? Oh, sorry. Councilor Seymour.
Blocking you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a recognition, last week, Adams County and Westminster lost a hero. Roger Gudenkauf was a man who affected many, many people in our city. He and a group of his neighbors got together several years ago after there was, three students were shot at Random High School to form the Neighborhood Action Group. He was part of the initial discussions when Growing Home was forming. Through Rotary and Roger's determination, distributed over 10,000 computers to children in our schools. And because of his determination, over 12,000 students, children between the ages of zero and five, in our community get a book every month. So he will be missed. His services will be this Thursday at 10:30 at Holy Trinity Catholic Church.
Thank you. A great person. Anyone else? I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. This council didn't declare eminent domain for the water plant. That was done before we got here. And the money had already been spent by the people they paid, and that's just facts. Then saying that no other sites were looked at, each one of us were asked where we wanted to look, and we gave our thoughts and ideas. We had some different ones on there than what had been looked at. And for all the reasons we've all said at different times, for me, I can only talk for me, that there was never a site, including Semper, where we could do absolutely whatever might need to be done technology-wise, or however otherwise, to keep this city sustainable with water and get water to everyone, except the site that was picked. We tried. I really thought one or two of the other sites would make it, but it was always what if, yes, but. It was never a clear cut that we could do what was in the best idea. And we don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. So we have to think outside the box and know that we have to be able to have this city set for water for the grand future. So I just wanted to clarify that because those were two statements that were not actually factual. That brings us to any other, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention a couple of quick things because I realize it's been a while since we have met. The mayor, myself, and Councilor Normella also went to the CML conference, which was really well-done. And I know we also had several staff members there. It was, I thought, a very beneficial time. It's the first time that I've went in the five years that I've been on council, prodded by the mayor to go to it, which I thank her, but I, I did think it was good. And I wanted to specifically mention at that meeting that I know two legislators from the state legislature that were honored, which was, one of them is Rachel Zenzinger, who is a senator for part of Westminster, and then...
Barbara Kirkmire.
Yep, Senator Kirkmire. We're both honored for fighting for local control with the housing situation with the governor's bill in 213. And I thought that was really good that, you know, they were honored by the different municipalities who are part of CML to support their work there. I know that also was mentioned, I heard, I didn't get to go to the lunch where the governor was, but I know that he has some other ideas about housing. So it sounds like that, that will continue to be the topic, which obviously is important for the metro area. But it seems like probably next legislative session we'll continue that, that conversation. But I thought it was important to note their recognition because I do thank them both for their work in continuing to fight for local control, and I think they both understand that. Other quick things that I would say is, I also would say, good job on the 4th of July. If those who didn't get to go to Vintage Baseball, I did get to drop by that. That was great. On Saturday, because I know the mayor was holding down the fort at Vintage Baseball, I got to attend a ribbon cutting. Our Walmart over here off of 92nd and Sheridan has a community clinic now as part of their pharmacy where you can, and it's in partnership with, I think, Boulder County Health, where you can go and get rapid HIV and other STD testing so that, you know, you could get on the path to recovery and, and understand your health situation. So that's actually a very good add for the community, for them to have that. The pharmacist over there, if you ever get to meet him, he's a riot, and he's very excited about the work he does for the community. I was there with the CEO of the chamber, as well as Commissioner Kraftthart from Jefferson County, and it was a good afternoon, and again, a good addition to our community. Lastly, I just learned about Roger here today, and, and I would like to just add that he, he was a great man. I served in Rotary with him. The amount of passion that that human being brought into the world was bar none. He is a good person. And I think, if I think about what we heard at CML, it was a lot of, the, the theme was a lot around the things you control and making the best of it. So that is a human being that certainly did that with his time on this earth. And so it was an honor to get to know him. And that's it.
Thanks.
If I could?
Sure.
It's amazing how memory works. I remember the assessment for locations for the new water plant differently. As I remember the report that was given by the supposed reassessment, second professional assessment, they did not look at any other sites beyond the Westminster Boulevard site, the Semper site, the MSC, and the alternate site. No other sites were considered. And when I suggested another site, misinformation from city staff frightened the council away from even considering that. And in hindsight, that was all bad information presented by the city staff. So I think the speaker had some very cogent points to make, and they should not be arbitrarily of the dismissed. Thank you.
I, I would agree with you on the fact that memory is a funny thing, because I do recall that the sites that you mentioned aren't sites that were originally all necessarily part of the original Water 2025 Plan. So there were additional sites looked at, and the idea that we were frightened, I take objection to, and I've taken objection every time you've mentioned it, because I do not deal in fear. I deal in facts and looking at pros and cons, and what is the best solution for the city moving forward. So I'm going to continue to object when you say things like, we were frightened. I'm not a schoolchild that is here who is frightened to be in this building. So you should think about how you approach things if you want to work with other people in, calling out people as frightened, malinformed, deceitful, lying, unless you can back it up with facts, I suggest maybe thinking about using different terms.
Councilor Normella?
I was going to say something rather similar. I do want to state that there were several rounds of review of different sites. One before that the, the former council was able to look at and review, and then that had community input in that process. And then the second with several new sites. And the site that, the two, I think there were two sites that were recommended by Councilor Baker. I definitely want to say that we don't feel that staff provided us with misinformation or that we were scared away. I think we all, the majority of us had a, or made the decision that those sites were inappropriate being located in. inappropriate being located in areas where there were a lot of residents and neighborhood, very tight neighborhood locations. So just wanted to clarify that, that we were trying to focus on sites that were, that would work well for the whole community.
Councilor? Okay. That takes us to consent agenda. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to adopt consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Councilor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 8A through D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Demott?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Demott. Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Normella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
And Councilor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to 10A. I will open the public hearing for, to approve the fourth amended preliminary development plan and the fifth amended official development plan for Lot 1 and Lot 2. Staff, do we have a presentation? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and city councilors. My name is Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, tonight's presentation, and public notices are hereby entered into the public record. Next slide, please. Lot 1, Block 2 of the Green Lawns subdivision is bordered by West 92nd Avenue to the north, Pier Street to the east, West 91st Court to the west, and reflections, and the reflections on 92nd Apartment Complex to the south. Semper Farm Open Space is located directly across 92nd Avenue to the north. Next slide, please. Approval of the fifth amended preliminary development plan and, I'm sorry, the fourth amended preliminary development plan and fifth amended official development plan would allow for the development of 40 townhome units on two, two and a half acres of vacant land. Here is the project concept to orient new 92nd Avenue is located to the north. The project features full movement access from West 91st Court on the west side and right in, right out only access from Pier Street to the east. Pedestrian access spans the site from east to west and north to south. On-site detention and amenity area and guest parking are located along the southern side of the property bordering existing off-street parking for the adjacent apartment complex. The townhomes are oriented toward these surrounding streets and to the landscaped area to the south. The units feature rear-loaded garages that are accessed from an internal alleyway. Each unit will have direct access to the surrounding pedestrian sidewalk network and a new multi-use trail segment that's along, that's proposed along 92nd Avenue. Next slide, please. City council previously approved the addition of multifamily land use to the site as part of the fourth amended PDP. At the time, a 40-unit multifamily project was proposed on the PUD Zone property. This new proposal for a 40-unit townhome project at the same development density requires the addition of the townhome land use to the PDP. Staff finds that the PDP amendment is in conformance with the suburban multifamily comprehensive plan designation, which lists townhomes as a primary use. The neighboring apartments to the south were built to a higher density than the proposed project, and the three-story scale of the townhomes is in keeping with the nature of the surrounding area. This project represents a key point of transition from a more auto-oriented development pattern to one that's becoming increasingly multimodal. So pushing the townhome units toward West 92nd Avenue will help activate a future multi-use trail that will run the length of 92nd Avenue from US 36 to Wadsworth Parkway. Other setbacks on the property mirror those of the neighboring apartments and allow for the efficient design of underground infrastructure. Access is located toward the rear of the site to minimize conflicts with traffic that's accessing 92nd Avenue. Given the unique site constraints and project goals, a number of exceptions from the multifamily design standards have been requested by the applicant. Staff directed the applicant team to orient the project toward the surrounding neighborhood to promote transit and walking and biking. In addition, the multifamily design standards were generally written for large greenfield projects and are often at odds with the unique layout and architectural requirements of small infill projects. Next slide, please. Staff found that the ODP is in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies, with exceptions to the multifamily design standards identified in detail. The guest parking area has been surrounded by dense vegetation, adding to the screening provided by an existing fence on the southern property line adjacent to the existing apartments. Low masonry walls have been located in between buildings to screen headlights and views into the rear alley from West 92nd Avenue. The minimum overall site area landscape has been reduced from the required 40% to 34%, which allows for additional pedestrian access from each unit and for the provision of a robust internal system of sidewalks. The landscape planting on the site has been provided in excess of the quantities required based on the 40% landscape requirement as compensation. The traffic study that was required along with the ODP supplemental found that impacts from the project are expected to be minimal and can be handled with existing infrastructure. Architecturally, the use of stone, stucco, and metal siding is compatible with surrounding buildings while adding a modern design expression. The corners of the buildings have been stepped down to reduce their overall scale, and two varying design typologies help enhance the visual interest while maintaining overall architectural coherence. Next slide, please. The planning commission reviewed this application on May 23rd and voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval. Next slide, please. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed amended preliminary development plan and official development plan, and that the city council approve the amended PDP and ODP with the finding that they meet the criteria set forth in Sections 11514 and 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Next slide, please. Staff finds that approval of these applications would meet the city council's strategic plan goal of shared sense of community through the provision of 40 new housing units, that that will be integrated into the surrounding community, and the goal of robust infrastructure through the incorporation of thoughtfully designed infrastructure systems. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. The applicant, Mike Tolson with Point Consulting is here tonight and will, and has a presentation to share with you as well. City staff members are also in attendance and are here to answer any questions after his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Keep it going.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? Thank you for the introduction, Nathan. If we get to the next slide, I will introduce the project team and let you know what we're trying to do here.
Don't forget to introduce yourself.
Sorry. Michael Tolson, I'm with Point Consulting. So to introduce the project team, ownership is Pierce LLC. They are represented by Brady Hyde, Jacob Bundy, and Bob Bowell. They are all in attendance tonight. The architect is Real Architecture. They are represented by Dave Burton, Kendall Goodman, and Rachel Fox. David and Rachel are here tonight. And then as for the civil engineering, landscape architecture, and surveying, that's Point Consulting, Mitch Shear, myself, and Kevin Watson. Mitch Shear is here in addition to me tonight. And so the reason we're here is because our team has the goal to develop a two-and-a-half acre vacant piece of land into 40 purchasable townhome units. Next slide, please. All right, site context. I know Nathan touched on a bit of this, but I figured I'd go a little bit more in-depth on the direct adjacent uses since they had some influence on how we wanted to design our site. And so directly to the north is open space, more specifically the Farmers Highline Canal Trail, which has about eight miles of trail connections. Further north is single family. To the south and west are multifamily developments. And then to the east is commercial. Directly east is storage, then Costco, and then less than a half mile away is downtown Westminster. And so I think it's important to note all that just because with our project site, we see it as a good transition piece between the downtown core and some of the single family and, you know, a bit more multifamily projects. And so that influenced how we wanted to design our buildings and site. Next slide, please. So to begin describing our site, I'll go with circulation. And so existing roadways around the site are West 92nd Avenue to the north, Pier Street to the east, and West 91st Court to the west. With our project, we're proposing a private drive that'll weave through the site. As you can see, it allows access to all six buildings, and, you know, the entrances are on the southern side of the site. And so with Pier Street, we'll be doing a right-in, right-out. And then on West 91st Court, we'll be doing a full movement access. Perks of this drive are that all the residents will have direct garage access from it, and it'll also, with it sweeping through the site, it reduces the amount of pavement we'll have to utilize to, you know, get everybody parked. With the drive, we have it 26 feet wide at the entrances, and then the main east and west areas to accommodate emergency access. And then that will actually open up to 32 feet in the central area. It's so wide because we're trying to fit water and sanitary in that area too, just so we can have all our infrastructure in one area. In addition to the access, we also have parking on site. We have 13 guest parking spaces on the southeast corner, one of them ADA accessible. And then we have five more, two of them between buildings one and two, and three of them between three and four. We did this because, you know, we could have probably put them at the southern end of the site, but it really would have diminished the whole appeal of having a private park area, and there really wouldn't have been much space for residents to enjoy. And so we figured by putting them in between the buildings where it's going to be less trafficked and less utilized, it would be more of a benefit to the residents. As for pedestrian circulation, you know, our goal is to create an extensive, well-connected system that will allow residents access to the full site. And so to begin, on the north end of the site, existing was an eight-foot sidewalk, and per direction of the city in coordination with them, we're actually removing the southern lane of West 92nd Avenue, and we are increasing the size of that sidewalk to 10 feet to accommodate a 10-foot multi-use trail. That's a part of the city's larger project of connecting downtown Westminster to Wadsworth with that 10-foot trail. And then north of that will be a treeline that'll help buffer the trail from the road. Another main sidewalk we're introducing is on the southern edge of the site beneath Buildings 3 and 4. That'll also go to West 91st Court and Pier Street. And then in the middle of the site, we'll have one north-south sidewalk that connects to the two main ones. We had it laid out like this because it will allow us to have private sidewalks going to each resident's patio, which then will have direct access to their homes. And then lastly, I will touch on the fact that we are improving the RTD bus stop on the north side of the site from a bench to a full shelter. Next slide, please. So landscaping, the intent with our design on the landscape is to create a low-water use design that also has seasonal interest. And so we're achieving that by providing native and adaptive plants that are evergreen perennials, just try and have a good variety for the residents. Notable features are, is the detention pond on the southwest corner of the site that is designed to handle all major storms and, you know, convey water safely. I'll get more into the private park area in the next slide. And then I do want to note that we take good efforts to screen headlights on the main east and west drives with 30-inch screen walls and dense planting, just so any headlight glare is mitigated going into 92nd Avenue. And so if you will go to the next slide, I'll get into some of the amenities. And so what we're looking at here is a zoomed-in area of the private park we're proposing. And so it's just south of Building 4, and it's in between the guest parking and the detention pond. And so with this area, you know, our intent was to create a space that had multiple different uses. That way, we can kind of encourage interaction between the residents and create a better community. And so some key features are sodded areas, and so the main one is south of the sidewalk. That's meant for more active recreation. Then we have a smaller one on the north side that will be morally intended for residents who have dogs, you know, that'll be an area to take them out, and that way any, you know, pet damage could be mitigated and maintained more easily. Along with that, just east of the sod area and south, we are proposing a stamped concrete patio. Along that east side will be seating with an overhead pergola. And then further south, we are proposing a seat wall, fire pit and grill area. And then west of that, we're doing a decomposed granite area large enough to suit, you know, cornhole or horseshoe or what have you. And then other features to note are that we are trying our best to screen this area from the parking, so we're going to have dense evergreen plantings, grasses, shrubs, just everything we can, just to kind of create a more inclusive space where you're not seeing cars and all that. And then one more item to note is that on the far south end of the area, we have a swale running through there, and it'll direct all the stormwater from the parking lot to the detention pond. And so with that, we're lining it with grasses, perennials, just trying to make it look as aesthetic as we can. And then to touch on the building amenities, each unit will have a covered patio porch area. The second level of all units will have a balcony. And then the end units on all the buildings will have a third-level balcony. And then a number of them also have rooftop decks, but I'll get into that on the next slide. So if you could go to the next one, please. All right, floor plans. So all the buildings will have similar floor plans from top to bottom, so I'm just showing you examples of Buildings 3 and 4 here, the seven-unit buildings. And so on that first floor, as you can see, there's the two end units. On the first floor, they will have a study and a bathroom. And then on the interior units, it'll be a bedroom and a bathroom. And then when you move up to the second floor, that's where some of the main amenities are, so the dining, kitchen, living room, and then a half-bath, and then, as well as balcony access. On third floor is a master bedroom, master bathroom, guest bedroom, and guest bathroom. And so all these buildings will average two to three bedrooms. And then with the roof decks, Buildings 3 and 4 will have five of them. The end units will not, as we're trying to step down and provide articulation. And then with Buildings 1 and 2, half of them will. The interior ones had to get minimized so we can make sure all of our utilities fit, so those don't have them either. And then for Buildings 5 and 6, the middle three will have them. So if you could go to the next slide, I will get into some of the materials. Nathan touched on this, three primary ones. We're doing a stucco, we're doing stone, and then we're doing a vertical corrugated metal siding. And so with the stucco, we're going to have two different colors. One is a green color and one's a navy blue. And then stone will be tan, and all the siding will be a brighter copper color. And then all the secondary elements, you know, railings, onings, downspouts, those will all be painted black. Next slide, please. So now we'll get into some of the elevations. This is the north one as seen from 92nd Avenue. And so as you can see with the buildings, there's a lot of articulation in the roof plane. We have canopies that come out for balconies and the patio. And the main intent of this was to kind of soften the transition from the right-of-way sidewalk to the building, just so they're not, you know, in your face. And then with these first two buildings here, Buildings 1 and 2, they will have the green stucco color. Next slide, please. East is very similar to one, with the exception that it has the blue stucco. And again, you know, a lot of articulation with the balconies, patios, et cetera. Next slide. South elevations, very similar to the east, just a couple extra units on it. These are the seven-unit buildings. And then on the next slide is the west. So these will look very similar to the east ones. We want to create a cohesive design with this site. And on the next slide is the final image I have for you. This is a 3D rendering of what we're imagining this site to look like. This is seen from West 91st Court and West 92nd Avenue. And so this helps paint a better picture of, you know, what the site could look like and what our overall goal is. And yeah, that's what I have for you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, does council have any questions for either staff or developer? Councilor Normella?
Well, one I just have, well, one question, one comment. One, I'm just really excited to see the improvements that are happening on 92nd Avenue and this developer embracing those and incorporating them into the design, including- including the bus stop, so thank you. So one, the only question I have is probably for Mr. Klein. It's the right-in, right-out onto Pier Street. I know there's only 40 units, but the design of the right-in, right-out, are we confident that, I have seen this so many times, where we have those right-in, right-outs, and that's the only signal to go west on Ninety Second, to get, to go west on Ninety Second? So I can imagine a lot of people not really following the right-in, right-out suggestion.
Good evening, Heath Klein, Transportation Engineer. Thank you, Counselor Nermella. The right-in, right-out is needed because in the peak hours, there's just too much stacking in the northbound left turn for eastbound or westbound Ninety Second and even the through lanes. Will it be adhered to at all times? We will be signing it. It is designed to be a right-in, right-out, but I cannot promise that people will always obey that. Ninety First Court, the full movement that we talked about, you can turn left there, and there are gaps. The nearest signal on the west side is at Wadsworth Boulevard. So there are some gaps, especially when you get the signal at Ninety Second and Pierce to stop the westbound traffic. And right now, based on our traffic report, there is not a ton of vehicles that are going to be making that. So yes, we are comfortable that this is a safe design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, Counselor Emmons?
So Counselor Nermella, I'm piggybacking off yours because that was my question. Are we going to improve Pier Street to have a median so people don't make a left? Because it's going to happen.
At this point, we don't. We don't have any raised median along Pierce from Ninety Second down to...
Is there any plans that if this was approved, that we would even talk about that?
We can talk about it. We'll have to evaluate that. If it does become a major issue, then yes, we can place a raised median there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, so Ninety Second is a combination of three lanes in each direction?
At this, there is three lanes eastbound at this location. And throughout the, throughout the corridor, yes, it bounces between two lanes in each direction to three lanes in each direction. Our downtown mobility study did take a look at the traffic volumes and had determined that from Westminster Boulevard west to Wadsworth Boulevard and Wadsworth Parkway, that we can accommodate a two-lane, a four-lane facility, so two lanes in each direction, with auxiliary right-turn lanes where needed.
Okay, and it was, I mean, the city that asked this really developer to take the third lane?
Yes. And so it is in accordance with that downtown mobility study. We are asking that we install right now the 10-foot multimodal trail. The downtown Westminster study did call out for an essential eastbound raised bike lane that would take up nine feet from the back of curb. And then we would have an eight-foot sidewalk after that. We, right now, since we don't have the rest of the infrastructure, we're taking advantage of the development here, and we're getting a 10-foot multimodal trail. And we'll have to look at a larger CIP project to bring the downtown mobility study to fruition.
In all of the previous incarnations of this, because this is what, a Fourth Amendment? Had, I mean, the city asked for the developer to take that third traffic lane?
I'm not sure the, I know that the one just previous to this, yes, we were looking to have the third lane removed as well.
But you're not sure on the previous?
On the previous two, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did people sign up for a public hearing, or they? How many do we have?
I have two people signed up for public hearing. The first speaker is Brian Albright.
Welcome.
Thank you. Brian Albright, 9205 Lamar Street. I basically have Ninety Second Avenue as my backyard. Been there for 20 years, seen all the changes, seen the increase of traffic. My concern is taking away this third lane down there. They spoke and said that they don't think there's going to be very many people heading west out of there, to the left, okay? They never said anything about people going east, which you're asking now, you take away that merge lane is basically what it is, like you have out here in, on the north side. You're, you're having people turn directly into oncoming traffic from a dead stop. Two times during the day, we all have it. Sun in your eyes in the morning, sun in your eyes in the evening. You know, people traveling in the morning may not see people turning right. Same, you know, same goes with people coming from the west in the evening. They may not see them turning, you know, or coming at them. To me, it's a ridiculous option to take away something that you guys put in there as a purpose to help people safely transition into traffic and to tra- you know, to transition out of traffic. I just don't believe it's safe. And one injury, one life, it's not worth it. I travel it, my wife travels it, other loved ones, other friends. We have friends that live there in those apartments, that that's how they get to the highway. I just don't, that's my only concern with this whole project, is taking away that little, little bit of that lane. Because it's, to me, it's a traffic hazard.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, all. A couple of quick things. I think we need a clarification. All the documents I've looked at claim this property to be 2.49 acres. They're projecting it as 2.5. I know that's not a lot, but legally, that is a lot. So we need clarification or correction on that. Next, a couple of quick questions. I didn't hear anything about PLD for this property. Is there public land dedication? And if so, where's it at? If not, what are they rendering to the city in lieu of? Next question, what about the overhead power lines that run along Ninety Second? Will they be undergrounding those? Whose responsibility is that? Because that's part of code now on developments. Will these units be solar re- solar-ready or EV-ready? Didn't hear anything about that. And by solar-ready, I don't mean just having a roof. I mean, will they be solar-ready? Never heard if these are going to be for sale or for rent units. And I know this doesn't really have a lot to do with what we're talking about here, but if I could get city slide number two up? Can we do that? Number two. There we go. What the signage you see there on the right? Now, city clerk, did you forward those pictures? Those pictures were taken this evening on my way here. You can't see a date, a time, the, whatever the code is. I can't think right now what that code is. I think we can do a little bit better job here. Now, I don't know when these pictures were taken, but it couldn't have been more than 10 days ago. I can't believe the weeds grew that much in 10 days. If they did, why didn't the developer come in and make it so it's more transparent to the community what's going on there? And as addition to that, why is the planner for this not looking at the big picture and checking up on this? And I say that not just of this development, but moving forward, we need to either have an addendum to the sign code or have some kind of clause in there regarding to the placement of that sign other than it needs to be on the property. Yes, it is, but it's not legible to anybody driving by. I had to get out of my car and take those pictures from the sidewalk. Now, as an example, just here recently, a month ago, we had a hearing about the Davies Locker, the 8835 property. They had three signs posted over there. They were well off of the ground, so that we wouldn't be looking at this same situation. And it's not just today, it's weeds, but how about this winter when it snows? If you've got that sign at ground level and we get a foot of snow or it drifts against them, the community and the public's not aware of what's going on. So we really need to do a better job with that. Okay? I think those were my main questions as far as the PLD, the power lines, the solar questions, and are they for sale or for rent units? Excuse me? Oh, I'm not hearing anything. And will there be HOA dues? And are any of them ADA accessible? I see we have handicap parking, but are the units actually ADA accessible? And will they be lead solar, or excuse me, lead construction where everything's low in, or low, low power? So if we could get those questions answered, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last person I had signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that didn't get signed up? Seen done?
Yeah, I, I didn't sign up, but I have some...
Name, please.
Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. I do drive along Ninety Second quite a bit, and I didn't even see the signs for this project. Yeah, I guess if there's 40% impervious or landscaping required, and it's only 34%, I, I do get concerned about that because I don't really think that it's in anybody's best interest to have more concrete versus less. Concrete and asphalt, these are all heat island effect surfaces. Even rock radiates heat. And, and I, I just hate to see this type of urban development in Westminster where we're just focusing on concrete and impervious surfaces. That's not good. It doesn't keep things cool. It doesn't allow water to permeate. And I, I really think we need to stick to, if, if it's required to have 40% pervious coverage, I don't see, I mean, I know why they're doing it. The more units they can pack in, the more money they make. But as far as helping the overall environment, it really seems that we should be sticking to some of the regulations, some of the codes that apparently are requiring 40% pervious coverage. We just don't need more asphalt and concrete. That, that doesn't help our environment.
Thank you. City Attorney Frankel? Would it be okay to call a brief recess and then come back to all this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Five minutes, we'll be back. Sorry.
Counselor, did she send us pictures to you last night?
Uh, yeah, I basically saw it, Rich, Rich had it. And, and, and after he was driving, the bottom was obscured.
Well, do you have any idea if there's a bus line on 92nd?
I honestly never paid attention. I would imagine it's a major, major.
I'm very tired.
Yeah, but I, I, I mean, you know, I see him on Federal. I see him on Sheridan. I see him on Lot, North South, so there's gotta be some going in this west. But I don't, I just don't. I think I've walked on 92nd. Did you hear that? So it is on, comes up hands and then goes eastbound on 92nd. Two seconds.
Like, like, extraordinary disappointment. Well, I went into 2002, you know, I, I got three. Say, please don't. Now, please don't. That's why Dave was so angry. I asked both Dave and Mark Carson, I was against it downtown. And neither would say they were against it. So I made four votes, I had about three people. About three people. In hindsight, it was, we were. And especially. She was one of the passionate architects. Is there anyone on City Hall letting us watch? Very well. And that was done by the city. And that, everything I said, it took. Too gentle, too.
Yes.
Yeah, if a poor multi-million dollar developer couldn't access it, we'd forecast it. Okay.
They're not home.
Are we ready? We are back to the public hearing, and we've had everybody speak. My question to staff and to the developer, um, we've had several questions asked by public. Do you wish to address them or? Come on up.
Hi, do you have any specific questions or just all the ones asked? Or do you want to take the one by one?
I tried to, I tried to write them all down, so we had the point, or the 2.49 acre over 2.50. We had, um, is, is the overhead power going under? Are they solar ready? Are they for sale or for rent? You heard about the sign that we'll have to deal with about weeds? Is there an HOA and are units ADA?
Thank you for that.
And PLD?
Thanks, um, I can speak to the 2.49. In my presentation, I said 2.5 just to save on some words. It is on the ODP, 2.4961 acres. And I'll let Heath Klein talk about the undergrounding, and then I believe we can call up the, uh, the, the developer to talk about the EV, the solar charging, the HOA and the rent versus market.
And then we had, I don't know if Heath or whoever, but they're taking that merging lane and using it as a full last lane. That concern. So I think that's all that I have written down. If somebody else has some others, speak up.
Good evening, Heath Klein again. So the overhead, that is a requirement of our Westminster code to have all the overhead electric undergrounded by the development. The city actually did partner with Excel and use some 1% funds to get the three-phase power already undergrounded. So what we see out there currently are the poles left for streetlights and for cable, and it's the power that's powering the streetlights. This development will be removing those and, in fact, installing a few more streetlights west of 91st Court as part of the, uh, their development. So that will be gone. The, uh, concern with the lane removal. So sometimes when you add additional lanes, you get additional speeding and it can increase your accidents. So what we are doing is we're trying to right-size our roadways, and we're looking at what it wants to, what we need to carry and to improve the safety. Mr. Albright is correct. There's been several accidents, and I believe his property has been a victim of several of these accidents. So right there, right now, if you're eastbound 92nd and you pass the Farmers High Line Canal and you go, it widens out. So actually, one of the accidents was due to somebody kind of racing around them. So by narrowing the roadway, it does actually increase the safety. And if you think about 112th Avenue, right now, that's a four-lane facility, and we have several, uh, right turns that enter that, that travel lane. 92nd east of Raleigh is the same, the same condition. A lot like at King Street, you're turning directly into, uh, one of the lanes of 92nd Avenue. 72nd Avenue corridor is the same, two lanes in each direction, not always having an auxiliary right turn lane or the, uh, acceleration lane.
Can I ask a follow-up? Because it's on the, on the traffic. Because I know that there's been, um, a couple of times in my five years that people have addressed concerns about that specific area on 92nd and having accidents. We've had folks visit us after accidents.
Yep.
So just trying to understand, like, how this goes. So you, you make these changes, like, if we see an increase and we see that this is actually having a negative effect from what, you know, you anticipate, like, how do we judge that and keep our, our finger on the pulse of that and, you know, what would the remedy be? I mean, is there ever a circumstance where we're like, this was the wrong move and go back the other way? Like, because, you know, I, I trust you and your judgment and your, your knowledge of this, but I also understand the concerns of the community and just driving that road and seeing how people drive anymore. I understand their, their concern.
Yeah, so if we did see a, as Mr. Albright brought up, if we see an increase in right turn accidents because they're turning into what we call the number two lane, uh, the, the closest to the south side of the street, then yeah, we may have to, uh, go back and make a decision to make that an acceleration, a combination of an acceleration lane and the right turn lane as it is now. Because there isn't a third lane, um, about 100 feet east of 90, or Pierce, because it actually narrows down to two lanes there. So there is an acceleration lane when you turn off of Pierce and start heading eastbound, but we go down to two lanes, then we widen again at Costco, then we widen again in front of downtown. And the downtown mobility study does talk about reducing those. So in the future, when we start to see development along the downtown, uh, portion, we are going to be removing a lane from that as well. But to your question directly, yes, we'll, we'll watch the accidents. Talking about that for westbound, we did an improvement to the north side of 92nd by reducing the lane there from Eaton to Westminster Boulevard, and then from Westminster Boulevard over to Ingalls to, to help, uh, the racing. That, those three lanes, once you get that, there, there's a tendency for people to try to race around.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I guess the other question I have and, you know, and I've not asked this before, and I haven't really seen us do this, but as far as like communicating to the people in those neighborhoods that there's going to be that shift when they, you know, what they're driving out of the neighbor into, neighborhood into, because they wouldn't necessarily see that if they're not on that street, and they may be very used to coming out of that community and not, you know, coming into the lanes being a certain way. So how do we, you know, kind of educate people above and beyond to make sure that their habits don't cause, you know, um, accidents, basically?
That's a good question and suggestion. I, I can, I'll, I'll talk with my staff about potentially getting flyers out to the apartments that are there on 91st Court so that they understand it. It's a stop condition, so we can't really say yield to, uh, vehicles because it is a stop condition. But by getting maybe a flyer out to the residents, that could help greatly.
Yeah, I just think back to one of the other ones that I had a lot of concerns, like when we did the changes on 100th and Sims. Uh, I, and I heard it from my community, there's, you know, you're just used to it. You drive it for 20 years and it's always that way. And I think we have a lot, a lot of long time people in those communities. So whatever we could do, I think would just be an extra good value to our community.
Yep, thank you.
I just have to chime in, because when we try to leave Costco via 92nd, and we don't, we can't go in that one lane very long because we have to get over all of the lanes to get into the turn lane to go down Harlan. So, um, I, I, I agree. It, it's a dilemma. I hope we pay close, close attention to it because I know how scary it is for me, even having a lane trying to get across, um, during Costco runs. And, and that can back up 10, 15 cars because it depends. If you're, if I'm the lead needing to get over and know that, I can't go to the very end and squeeze in because I've got to get over two more lanes plus get into the, the left-hand lane. So it, it is on a wing and a prayer, usually when I go to Costco's. Anyone else? Or did you have anything else? Oh, Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. What was the timeline for this project roughly?
To be constructed?
Yeah.
That would have to be answered by the developer. I, I don't know that. Thank you.
Can the developer answer? Counselor Azadi's question?
Hi, Mike Tolleson, Point Consulting. To answer your question, I guess it depends how quickly we can get through construction documents, but we're hoping to begin construction in 2023.
And then roughly when?
Let me think about this one. So say we get CD approval and if you, I guess, September, October, breaking ground.
Of, of next year?
2023.
Oh, of, of this year?
This year, yep.
To break ground?
Yeah, and then as for duration, I, I can't give you a good answer on that one.
So the reason why I'm asking, city manager, maybe, you know, this concern of this lane, if we can actually, you know, how we've done this for some topics where we put a pin in a future meeting, just so we don't lose sight of this, you know, it's, it's, it might be easy to forget that we've asked for a follow-up, but i- if we can keep a close eye on this from a statistical standpoint and bring it back to council at a specific future time. So I know we don't know when this will be done, but it would be good to revisit this.
And while you're here, did you want to answer any of the other questions?
Absolutely.
Solar ready?
So that is not something we've looked into, but, um, you know, we're doing all-electric buildings and, you know, if that's something that we further discuss in the construction document phase, that's something that we can easily provide a hookup to the top and let the owners decide if that's something they want to do.
And for sale or for rent?
For sale.
HOA?
Yes, um, HOA will, all of the landscaping will be in an HOA tract and owned and maintained by it.
And you, any units ADA?
Yeah, so with this project, we're adhering to the American Disabilities Act. We have, of the 40 units, 32 of them are ADA accessible.
Counselor Numella?
I just had a follow-up to Counselor Azadi's request for follow-up. I would just ask that, I mean, perhaps there's just also, um, some education on just, for example, we've already installed the improvements at Ingalls and 92nd on the north side of, um, of the road with, you know, doing a similar change. So, and that was after we lost a life at, at that intersection. And so, um, if there's that or any other locations, um, any other locations in the community where we've already installed or done something similar, perhaps that can also help instead of just relying on this one location.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I, I'm taking notes, so I'm not sure if it was answered. Um, public land dedication?
Uh, we are doing a fee in lieu.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have the number for you. At the, on hand, I'd have to look at the documents.
May have missed in your presentation, um, how many parking spaces total?
So with, all of the units have two internal ones minus four on the north side. And then we have 18 guest parking spaces, and so we are meeting city requirements with parking.
Okay. And then the question on the, the park that you were describing, my question is, is there any way that we can, I, I'm sure you have it scientifically in the spot that you do. Is there any way that we could shift it a bit so that you could split the parking? Because that's a really long walk from one end to the other, and especially if it's ADA compliant. That's really long distance.
Yeah, and so with this site, there are multiple constraints, and we had, you know, make some sacrifices and basically the design we came up with is really tied in everything we're doing. And I guess the issue that, that would be with shifting it is that the site wants to drain to the southwest. And so, you know, making that our low point seemed like the best option for us. Just don't want to fight grade and make extra construction work. And, yeah, just due to that, it just seemed like the best option to keep parking in one area, detention on another area, and just make sure everything flows to the right places.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Counselor Numella?
The 18 spaces that you're providing in addition to the garage parking spaces, is that above or just meeting our code?
Meeting code.
Okay. You know, it's a lot of parking. So, um, you know, we had a comment from, uh, the public regarding just the overall pavement on the site, and, um, that's just something for us to think about because we're requiring a lot of parking on-site. Thanks.
Anything else? Do you have anything further you want to share?
I can answer that, uh, final comment about just the 34% landscape versus 40. You know, as mentioned, with the zoning on this, trying to fit density versus landscape and routes, you know, there's a lot going around. And, you know, we made that sacrifice in the landscape area, but it's not like we're just taking the impervious area and throwing it off-site. You know, the more impervious we get, the more we have to size our detention pond and make sure we can hold that water accordingly. So it's being accounted for, and, you know, I agree, more landscape, the better. I'm, I'm always for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from staff? Okay. It is 8:31, and I will close the public hearing. And that moves us to A2, a motion. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the fourth amended preliminary development plan and fifth amended official development plan for Lot 1, Block 2 of the Green Lawn subdivision filing number one, Plan Unit Development. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amended preliminary development plan and amended official development plan are generally supported by the criteria set forth in Sections 11-5-14 and 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item A2. Is there any further discussion? I just wanted to say, um, I applaud the landscape. One of the first times I've seen water-sensitive stuff come and share with us, and I think that's terrific. The only thing I would just lay out there, because it's happening down in downtown, when you don't have dog runs or spaces just for the dogs, downtown, they come out, go on the sidewalk level, um, plants that are there, and plants can't live on urine. So, um, they're dying, and they're constantly having to be either replaced or they look horrible, and the smell's horrible. So I just share that because, um, that's just what animals are going to do if, um, there's animals that are going to be around there. And, um, I don't like what's been happening downtown, but it is what it is. And even if they have a little bit of a raised bed so that the dog has sort of the height of a fire hydrant to go on, they're not hurting the plants. Otherwise, um, all of your effort to have beauti- beautification with these plants is going to just die. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protim Damak?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10B. I will, it is 8:34. I will open the public hearing. Do we have staff report? Okay. Do we have, um, anyone else that wants to speak on it?
There was nobody signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, and we, we don't have anybody else that would talk. Okay. Seeing no one, um, I will close the public hearing at 8:34. And that brings us to motion B2.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Hall Irwin, Inc. for the block A1 Alley in downtown Westminster in the amount of $1,042,336, plus a 15% contingency in the amount of $156,350 for a total not to exceed an amount of $1,198,686.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 10B as envoied to. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protim? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Thank you. And B3 is a revised motion that was sent to your emails. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 34 on First Reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of $1,273,686 for the 2023 budget of the General Capital Improvement Fund, WRP Roadway Alley Capital Project. This appropriation will cover the construction, Page 2 of 5, contract with Hall Irwin, Inc. totaling $1,042,336, plus a 15% contingency fee in the amount of $157,156,350, and another construction related, and other construction related services such as restoration and materials testing and construction management services totaling $75,000. And correcting the typographical error in the attached account table reflecting the current budget is $139,081. And the revised budget should read $1,412,776.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 34. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10C1, Counselors Bill 35. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number, or Counselor Bill 35 on First Reading, amending Title VI, Chapter VII of the Westminster Municipal Code to eliminate the dog license requirement.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 35. Is there any further discussion? This was the thought of Counselor Baker. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 19. Counselor Emmons?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 19, revising the city council's rules and regulations.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 19. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 10E, Adopt Resolution Number 20. I don't know who's first. Counselor Seymour?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 20, authorizing the application for congressionally directed funding for the Federal Parkway Multimodal Improvement Project.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 20. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Adopt Resolution Number 21. Counselor Seymour?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 21, authorizing the acceptance of congressionally directed funding for the Federal Parkway Multimodal Improvement Project.
Counselor Emmons?
Yeah, a second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 21. Is there any further discussion?
I do have a quick question. Quick question for staff. I may have missed it, but does this improve sidewalks as well as roadway? Because this area is badly needed.
Could you come on up and answer the question? Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. My name is Seth Plasse. I'm a Capitol Projects Administrator. This project's, this corridor, Federal Parkway, between 120th and 122nd has kind of been piecemealed over, over time with developments and a C-Dot project at the 120th intersection. So some of the sidewalks are built and there are gaps that this project will complete.
Okay, perfect.
And in addition, there will be connections to the Big Dry Creek Trail.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 10E, Adopt Resolution Number 22. Counselor Seymour?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 22, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation pertaining to the receipt of $3 million from the state for the Federal Parkway Multimodal Improvement Project.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass or adopt Resolution Number 22. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Seymour, did you have something? Counselor Nermella?
I just want to say how excited I am because I drive this every day and that we were able to get some funds, well exceeding our match. So very happy that staff was able to achieve this.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 10E4.
I move to authorize a payment of $750,000 to the project as part of the local agency match funding requirement.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize Item 10E4. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to 10F1. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a Second Amendment intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as the Mile High Flood District in the amounts of $350,000 for preliminary design of the Shaw Heights Tributary Drainage Project.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counsel, uh, Item 10F1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 10G1. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Alpine Civil Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,299,398, plus a contingency in the amount of $130,000 for a total authorization not to exceed $3,385,153, when combined with the original contract for Phase 1 to perform construction services for the Benton Street Roadway and Utility Construction Project, Phase 2.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item G10G1. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
Yes. Do we have any interest for the properties adjacent to Benton Street? I know after basically Schnitzer left, that was the last interested party, unless we have some more.
Mark, great question, sir. So this project will frame those D blocks of downtown for those next 10 developments for office space. So the answer right now is absolutely no direct interest, but they should be marketed heavily for future office. And this project will help us frame exactly where that property will be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10G2. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with the Alfred Ben Sh, sure, and company in the amount of $45,204, plus a contingency in the amount of $15,000 for a total authorization not to exceed $305,770, when combined with the original contract for Phase 1 to perform construction, administration, and inspection services for the Benton Street Roadway and Utility Construction Project, Phase 2.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 10G2. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protem?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10H1. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the creation of a full-time temporary wellness court case resource navigator position within the Westminster Municipal Court to be funded through December 31, 2024 by State of Colorado Criminal Justice Early Intervention Grant Award.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 10H1. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the judge and the people who work at the court for continuing to look at innovative ways to address the needs of our community as far as justice services are concerned. So I know there's a lot of work going in through the different kinds of courts, and I think that's a better approach for us to do to figure out ways to kind of break some of those cycles. So I appreciate this and look forward to you continuing your work.
Counselor Nermella?
I also wanted to echo that and thank the, thank you to Jason for looking at this. And I, one question I have for you is, when we are looking at this as a temporary position, how do we, you know, it talks about like we're looking at the success, but I think this is something we'll need for a long time. So how are we going to measure that?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and counsel. Thank you, Counselor Nermella. So we have different metrics that we're going to look at with this individual should counsel approve the position. For instance, number of individuals served, what the particular needs of those individuals were and what resources they were connected to. So really, at the beginning, we're going to start by building a data set. Right now, we're, we're starting from scratch, essentially. But to also, one of the tasks that this individual will have is to develop a list of resources that are available. And so another way that we're going to gauge success is what were the resources that were identified, which resources were individuals connected to, what was the outcome of those connections. And so as, if this position progresses forward, what we're going to be looking at are those sort of factors. And then building up essentially that data to, to determine the success of the program. That's what we're going to be looking at. Aside from that, we'd also be looking through the wellness court at our graduation rates, the number of individuals that were able to intake into the program and what their success rate is, once we have a dedicated navigator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, just wanted to pile on with the others and say that this is a fantastic idea. And thank you for leading this.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
This is really probably more for, for Mark. The, I know that when we went through this similar kind of process, we brought the navigators into the police department. That was originally off of a grant and we started looking forward to how we budget it. So I would just ask that we, you know, kind of put a placeholder in the budget that would be passed that first year, because if it shows the same kind of success that we saw in that program, chances are it's going to come back. And I feel, I at least would advocate that if it's successful, that we do make it part of our full time budget. And I know that will be up to us, but kind of being ahead of it, because that is the same kind of path we went through with the navigators for the police department and ended up coming back saying, we want this in the budget.
Certainly understand.
Counselor Emmons?
Well, you haven't heard anything new tonight that I'm going to say, but thank you for working on this. I know that in working with you, my time on council, this has kind of been something that's, you've been working on. And it's nice to see that it's been brought to fruition for the wellness court. In particular, I've seen this firsthand through CASA and I've seen several success stories come of it. I wasn't, if you will, a true believer of wellness courts, but seeing how, how people get the time and attention that they need to get in the right direction, it's so helpful to turn people on the right path. And so I can't, can't agree more and so proud to say that I will be voting for this tonight. But thank you for all your work on this and everyone involved.
I too took a deep breath and said, ah, yes, it's so really needed. So thank you for all that you do and your team. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item 10H2. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the State of Colorado Department of Human Services to receive grant funding in the amount of $150,863 to fund the salary benefits and office expenses for this position through December 31, 2024.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 10H2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.